Parivam. Mukta vidru mahema neeladhavala chayair mukai streekshanai. Yuktamindu nibaddharat namakutam tatpaarthavarnatmicam. Gayatri varada bayam puja kajaham. Shubram kapalam gadam. Shankam chakra madharabinda yugalam hastairvantiim baji. Sri Gurupiyam namaha. Namaste. Welcome to this special session on Om. Om is considered the original vibration of the universe in Hinduism. Or the vibration from which all other vibrations are born. In Hindu scriptures, it is defined as the foundational sound of creation. Om is the symbol of God. It is also called pranava. The importance, significance of Om is well described in verse twenty-three and twenty-four in seventeen chapter of Bhagavad Gita. Not only that, we come across several references to Om in various places in Bhagavad Gita and in various Upanishads. The entire Mandukya Upanishad is dedicated to description of Om only. Om represents Brahman only. Lord Krishna on more than one occasion declares that he is Om. Rasoham apsukavante ya prabhasmi shashisurya yo ho. Pranavas sarvavedeshu shabdakhche pawrushamrushu naana vijnana yoga. Pita mahasya jagato mata dhatapita mahaha vedyam pavitra omkaram rukshama yujare vacha rajavidya rajagukhyayoga. The three words attributed to the supreme power omnipresent sarvavyapi, omniscience sarvakna, and omnipotent sarvak sharva shakta derived from the Latin word omne. Om is the essence of entire Vedanta. Swami Ramathirta says, what is Om in Hindu Dharma is amen in Christianity, Amin or Alem in Islam. He further explains the three letters Ya, Yu, Yam, which comprises the word Om represents jagruta svapna sushupti. It is said omkara comprising of Ya, Yu, Yam are a, u, ma has forty-one attributes or meanings. I ventured to name a few of them here under. While the three words Ya, Yu, Yam, a, u, ma represents the three letters, the last one represents the silence or the entire omkara. Jagruta svapna sushupti, omkara is turiya. Svap sattva rajastamas, omkara is gunatita. Past, present, and future, kalatita, a creator is Om. Adibhautika, adibhik, adhyatmika, adiyakna is omkara. Ichsha shakti, kriya shakti, knana shakti, mahashakti is omkara. Omkara rupini, sthula sukshma karana paramatma is omkara. Sristi stiti laya, Brahman is Om. Rukya jussama, gnanam. Prati bhaskar, vyavaharika, paramarthika, brahmasatkyai is omkara. This verse from Katoopanishad caps it all. Eta dalambanam shreshtam, eta dalambanam param. Eta dalambanam gnatva brahmaloke mahiyate. Says, one who knows omkara will be worshipped in Brahmaloka. Doctor Sanjay Merutra will explain this to you during the course of this class. Paramvedanta has designed this program exclusively focusing on Om. This is split into two sessions. Today, our teachers will explain various verses about Om from different Upanishads and Bhagavad Gita. In our next session, we will study the mantra from Mandukya Upanishad only. Before we go to the verses, Doctor Hegde sir will give a brief introduction to the concept of this program as well as the subject matter. Hegde sir please.
Thank you Venkatesh for a very nice introduction. Sadashiva samarambam Shankara acharya madhyamam. Asmoda acharya pariyantam. Vandey guru param param. Om. The inspiration to look for verses dealing with omkara in the Bhagavad Gita and in the Upanishads came after a retreat by Swami Chidhanandaji titled All About Om, Alpha and Omega of Om. Omkara bindu samyuttam. Nityam dhayanti yoginaha. Amadam mokshadam chayda. Omkara yanamo namaha. Nityam dhayanti yoginaha. The realized people or the sadakas all the time nityam meditate on omkara. And the power of omkara is all the purushartas would be fulfilled by meditating on omkara. There are two forms of meditation on Om. One is before Brahma Vidya which is called upasana and most of the verses today will be upasana based. Verses where omkara becomes useful for meditation. And then once we have Brahma Vidya particularly with the knowledge of the Upanishad, omkara becomes a wonderful tool for nidityasana. This is a hybrid shloka which can be used both for dhanam or for nidityasana. Om namapranavarthaya shuddha jnanaika murthai. Nirmalaya prashantaya dakshina murthai namaha. Omkara represents Sri Dakshina Murthy, the Adi Brahma Vidya Acharya who is the embodiment of pure knowledge. Who is ever pure, who is beyond Shanti and Ashanti, who is Prashanti. And omkara therefore represents both the saguna and the nirguna aspects of omkara. It is said that the devas who because of their punya are enjoying their time in heaven suddenly decided why not do a little bit of vedic studies? So they came to Brahmaji to find out can we get some knowledge and Brahmaji gives them the four vedas. Now, all their time is spent in Voga and the four vedas were too much for them and they go back to Brahmaji and say can you give us something briefer? And Brahmaji does a lot of meditation. And from his meditation is able to get the essence of all the vedas and he gives them the Gayatri mantra. They listen to it and they say this is also too much for us, can you give us something more briefer? And Brahmaji after further meditation gives them Om buh buh swaha. They say even this is too much, can you give us something even shorter? And Brahmaji obliges them by giving omkara. You will listen to this beautiful verse, yes Chandasaam Rishabhovishvarupa from Vani, Vani please.
Hari Om Sri Gurupiyam namaha. The mantra goes like this. Yes Chandasaam Rishabhovishvarupa ha. Chandobyo dyamrata at sambabhova. Samindro meedaya. Sprunoto amritasya devadhara no bhoyasam. Shariram me vicharshnam. Jifwa me madumattama. Karana abhyam bhori vishvam. Brahmana kosho si meedaya pithaha. Shutam me gopaya. This anuvaka is from Thaitrayo Upanishad. So Thaitrayo Upanishad has four chapters, San Shankara Acharya has written commentary for the first three. That is the Shikshavali, Brahmanandavali, and Brugavali. Shikshavali starts with Shiksham vyakyas yamaha. Brahmanandavali starts with Brahavidapnotiparam and Brugavali starts with Brugavaidwarani. The first and the third chapters discuss about the preparatory disciplines of karma and upasana. To gain the eligibility to pursue gnanam. So that is mostly karma pradana. And the second Brahmanandavali is has more of gnanam. So in this Upanishad, the guru is referred as Acharya and the student as Antevasi. This mantra is especially for the Japa to increase our meeda shakti. We see in the beginning and the ending of this mantra, one Om is glorified and Bhagavan is glorified before asking anything from him. Yes Chandasaam Rishabhovishvarupa. Chandha here represents the vedic mantras and Rishaba is the bull which stands for strength and energy. It also means shreshthaha, the greatest and the glorious. So among all the vedic mantras, omkara which is compared to Rishaba is the most glorious and the greatest. So Brahma as Doctor Hegde said, Brahmaji contemplated that is he did immense tapas and extracted the essence of vedas. So the essence of Rigveda was tatsaviturvaranyam. And the essence of Yajurveda was Bhargo devasyadeemahi. And the essence of Samaveda was diyoyona prachodaya. Later he condensed them to three words, buh buh swaha. Further he condenses this to a, u, ma. So Om is the essence of Rig, Yajur, and Samavedas. It covers all the words. All the words originate and resolve into Om. For example, if you consider a clay pot, it is made of clay. So the karanam is clay but when the pot is broken, it again resolves back to clay. And this omkara is vishvarupa. There is a, uh, there is one example in Chandogya Upanishad. It is compared to the veins of a leaf. How the veins pervades the whole leaf, omkara pervades the whole jagat. So it is vishvarupa. Bhagavan Sri Krishna glorifies omkara in Bhagavad Gita, chapter ten, twenty-fifth verse as he is the omkara in Shabdha. Chandobyo amritata at sambabhova. So from the eternal immortal vedas, omkara surfaced or originated. Samindro meedaya sprunoto. So here, Indra is not the Devendra of Deva Loka but here the seeker is praying Lord, that is omkara rupa parameshwara to strengthen the meeda shakti. So what is this meeda shakti? Meeda shakti is defined as a capacity to receive, grasp, absorb, and retain the vedantic teaching, that is a garhana and then dharaana shakti. The student is praying to strengthen his meeda shakti for spiritual growth, not for any material gains. Amritasya devadhara no bhoyasam. In this context, amritai self-knowledge. So the seeker, Antevasi is praying, oh Deva, I should be the possessor of this self-knowledge or Brahmagnanam which is the means to immortality. Shariram me vicharshnam. See for anything to, for us to pursue, our body must be fit and healthy. So the seeker here prays the Lord for his body to be healthy and fit to pursue the vedantic studies. Jifwa me madumattama. So the speech, let my speech be sweet auspicious and noble. Lord Krishna describes how one's speech must be in the seventeenth chapter of the fifteenth verse. Anadvega karam vakyam. Satyam priyam hitancha. So next we have karna abhyam bhori vishnu. Let my ears be fit. So in, in the modern education, we see lot of importance is given to reading, writing, and speaking but not much of importance is given to listening. But in our vedic culture, we have lot of importance given to shravanam. This is the first step. And we, I mean the second and the mananam and the nidityasam is cannot go without this shravanam. So the student prays for the fitness of all his organs that is dhanendras and the karmendra. So that he can get the eligibility to pursue the nanam, that is dhanayogyata prapti. Brahmana kosho si. The student concludes glorifying omkara again. So kosha here means sheep. So we are all familiar with the panchakosha, sanamaya, pranamaya, all those. So Brahman is covered by the sheet of omkara. But Brahman is all pervading, how is this possible? So here it is very, very figurative. It is presented as a container of Brahman. So omkara is covering Brahman, for example the sword and the scabbard. So the scabbard covers the sword, similarly the omkara covers this Brahman. Meedaya pithaha, pithaha means covering. Meeda here means laukika, knowledge or gnanam, worldly knowledge. So meeda was described as garhana me dharaana shakti. So here but we see most people are interested in worldly knowledge, therefore they are extrovert in nature. So we can say Brahman is covered by this extrovertedness. So the seeker, Antevasi, prays omkara rupa parameshwara to turn his mind inwards. Shutam me gopaya, he prays the Lord, hey omkara rupa parameshwara, let whatever I listen during the vedanta shravanam be preserved in my mind. So this mantra is to increase the meeda shakti for the Antevasi. Thank you so much sir, Hari Om.
Thank you very much Vani for a nice explanation of a wonderful mantra and all students of Vedanta should make a very sincere attempt to learn this mantra by heart. And of course it will help us to improve our memory also. The next mantra will be also from Shikshavali will be explained to us by Indu Matiji, Indu please.
Sri Gurupiyam namaha. Mundaka Upanishad discusses how Brahman is revealed through the analysis of omkara. Upasana is always a, on saguna, upasana is always on saguna Brahman. Omkara is the most sacred mantra because Brahmaji extracted it by churning the vedantras. Thus, omkara, the essence, the saara is as potent as the vedas. This section discusses the glory of omkara, that is omkara mahima. We see the shloka in the next slide which goes like this. Omityetadan kruthirhasmava. Apyo shavayaty. Shavayanti. Omitisamani gayanti. Omshomitishastrani sham santii. Omityadvaryu pratigarum pratigridnati. Omityagnihotram anujanati. Omitibrahmana pravaksanna hab. Brahmai vopaapnoti. Omitibrahma. The word here is Om, it is Brahman itself. Omitidamsarvam for Om is everything. Omiti etat anukruthi hasmava. Om only indicates agreement, appeal. Also shavayayati, ashtravayanti. Priests say Om when they ask other priests to start reciting the hymns to gods and goddesses. Omitibhamani gayanti. As the priests start reciting the samah hymns, they say Om. Omshomiti, they say Omshom shastrani. Non-musical hymns from Rigveda which are called shastras. Sham santii start singing. Advaryuho, the priest in a eduhu is sacrifice. Pratigridnati, pratigarum. Omiti, in everything he does, he says Om Brahma. Another kind of priest, omitiprasauti says Om indicating the approval of something. Omithi agnihotram anujanati. Those who perform the agnihotra sacrifice say Om to signal the beginning of the sacrifice. Omitibrahmana pravaksanna hab. A Brahmin says Om when he wishes to study the vedas in order to realize Brahman. Brahmeeva upapnoti, he eventually does realize Brahman. In the next slide, we see to conclude, one should meditate omkara as Brahman. Omkara is an expression of acceptance. Samaveda priests sing samamantras after uttering omkara. Rigveda priests chanting the Rigmantras after uttering Omshom. Yajurveda priests express permission by uttering omkara. The atharvana veda priests give permission by uttering omkara. So the priests permit to do agnihotra rituals by uttering omkara. Desiring to learn the vedas, the Brahmins utter omkara with the intention, let me attain vedic knowledge. He certainly attains vedic knowledge. Hari Om, thank you.
Thank you very much Induji for an excellent chanting and bringing out the essence of this beautiful mantra which talks about omkara and the greatness of omkara. All Upanishads talk about omkara, that's what our present, presentation we will see. Mundaka, we need to remember Munda, the shaven head and it's a very beautiful Upanishad where you will have a nice bow and arrow example, the chariot wheel example for omkara. The Upanishad that deals predominantly with Om is Mandukya. It comes from Manduk which means frog which jumps from baking dream and deep sleep. From the Katoopanishad we have two mantras which will be explained to us by Ramagopalakrishna, Ramaji please.
Hari Om Sri Gurupiyam namaha. Katoopanishad is the gently philosophical story of a little boy, Nachiketa, the son of sage Vajasravas. Who meets Yama, the vedic deity of death. Their conversation evolves to a discussion of nature of Atma, Brahman, Ota. Revealed in two adhyayas, split into six sections known as wallis. Today I will be explaining about Om as disclosed by Yamaraja to, to the little boy. It is based on a few mantras from Katoopanishad, secondly a first adhyaya. The context is described in the next slide. In the fourteenth mantra, Nachiketa again sought the fulfillment of his third boon of self-knowledge, rephrasing in vedantic language. He continues to speak to Yamaraja and demands to know about the absolute truth. Nachiketa himself defines it as one that Yama sees as different from karma phalam in the form of dharma and adharma. Different from cause and effect, also different from past and future. And the mantra says. Sarve vedayat padam amananti. Tapamsi sarvaanichayat vadanti. Yadichchanto brahmacharyam charanti. Tatte padam sangraheena pravimi. Omityetata. The goal which all the vedas speak of, which all penances proclaim and wishing for which the aspirants lead the life of brahmacharya, that goal is Om. The word meaning of the mantra. Yamaraja replying to his question explains tatpadam known as omkara. All vedas that is both karma kanda and dhanakandas uniformly proclaim that Om as the means to attain ultimate reality, the Brahman. Vedas guide us through them, always pointing towards that which is beyond desires. Like a sugar-coated bitter medicine given to a child, vedas direct us from known to the unknown. Yet sarvaani tapamsi vadanti. Spiritual disciplines like rituals, practices, and Yamas are prescribed as tapas to acquire sadhana chattvstaya sambhathiki. It is very much required to realize that ultimate padam. Yadichchanto brahmacharyam charanti. For which purpose seekers control their senses, become spiritual disciples to study dhanakandam and melt a flint of avidya, karma, and karma. Significance of Om or tatpadam called omkara is pointed out in this slide. Yamaraja says that the ultimate reality Brahman is a simple word, omkara. It is the non-dual reality and the very core of vedantic inquiry. He further glorifies omkara as the best symbol or alambanam for upasana. Sukshna buddhi is required to realize the Brahman. To prepare the mind, Lord Yama prescribes omkara upasana as pratika, a symbol to reach. Saguna Brahman or even to attain nirguna Brahman. Thus, the symbol Om stands for both wings of higher worlds namely preyas or shreyas margas as desired by the aspirant. More about omkara upasana is detailed in this slide. Being in prayomarga sakama omkarta upasaka will reach Brahmaloka, the seventh heaven as a first step. Obtain nirguna Brahmagnanam from Brahmaji himself and attain moksha which is called krama muktihi. Being in shreyomarga nishkama omkara upasaka will attain nirguna Brahma in his current janma which is called jeevan muktihi. He lives until his prarabdha karma shesha is burnt out. The seeker meditates on either shabdavajam, the sound symbol of Om, or shabdapratikam, the form of the letter Om. Here, omkara is a pratika alambanam. The guru prescribes these upasanas in accordance with the adhikara bheda of the seeker. Pratima alambanam is the human representation such as Sri Rama or Krishna. Whereas pratika, pratika alambanam is the non-human representation such as saligramam or shivalingam. Thank you, Hari Om, Sri Gurupiyam namaha.
Thank you very much Ramaji for a excellent explanation of this verse which is like the climax where Nachiketa is very keen to know about. Brahman Vidya that Yamadarmaraja gives the importance of omkara as pranava, the ideal name for God, both saguna as well as nirguna. You will see what a similarity the Bhagavad Gita has when you listen to the Bhagavad Gita verses which talk about omkara which will be explained to us by Mamtha, Mamtha please.
Sri Gurupiyam namaha. Chanting the verse, chapter eight, verse eleven, Bhagavad Gita. Yadaksharam vedavidova danti. Vishanti yadyatayovi taraga. Yadichchanto brahmacharyam charanti. Tatte padam sangraheena pravakshi. Little meaning of this verse is, I shall briefly declare to you that imperishable goal which the newer of the vedas speak about, which the dispassionate sanyasis attain and desiring which they live a life of brahmacharya. The next slide. We just heard the Katoopanishad verse. This verse which is, which I will be talking about is just paraphrasing the Katoopanishad verse, almost identical. It also has a different meter or rhythm which could signify the importance of the verse. Krishna talks about the greatness of the Lord that involves in everything in the creation. Krishna says, yadaksharam vedavidova danti. That is the destination or goal that is God, that all the vedavidaha, that is the knowers of the central theme of Upanishad, talk about is aksharam. In the beginning of eighth chapter, in response to Arjuna's question on what is Brahman, Krishna's response in the verse eight point three is. Paramam aksharam brahma, that is aksharam means imperishable, so the greatest imperishable entity is called Brahman. In the Mundaka Upanishad, the absolute reality is referred to as aksharam, that is nirguna Brahma. And it goes on to state that it is the only source of security, peace, happiness, and fullness. In Brahadaranyaka Upanishad, when Egnavalkya is responding to Garvi's question on what is aksharam in the verse three point eight point eight that begins with. Tadva etad aksharam Garvi. Brahmana abhi vadanti, there is reference to aksharam and it represents Brahman with no attributes or properties. The next slide. Krishna goes on to say, yad yatayaha vashanti. The word yatayaha literally means that those who are committed to gnanam, one who pursues the spiritual goal that is Brahman single-mindedly. one who pursues the spiritual goal that is Brahman, single-mindedly, and the qualification is vitaragaha. That is, those who are detached from worldly activities has turned away from the finite goals of life to infinite ones. That is, they have realized all goals associated with worldly pleasures arise from the raga dvesha which is inherent of any human being. And they are finite in nature. They cannot give security, peace, happiness and fullness and only when Aksharam, the infinite, which is Brahman is our goal, we can achieve security and fullness. Swamiji gives an analogy to a cardboard chair where we can do everything with it except sitting on it. When we can associate with worldly objects to accomplish whatever we would like to do dharmically, the analogy of cardboard chair can be applied here. Our Shastra says the highest goal is by, is to attain that Aksharam that Brahman alone. The committed seekers have this clarity. In the next slide, Krishna continues to say, yadichchanto brahmacharyam charanti. That committed seekers, ichchanto, desiring to know that yet Aksharam, which is the only spiritual goal, lead the life of Brahmacharya. In this context, Brahmacharya means those committed to study of scriptures. And Krishna says, aham sangrahena pravakshi. That is, I shall briefly define the nature of that Ishvara or the Lord. Lord Krishna is going to discuss Omkara as a symbol or alambanam to represent Brahman and the importance of Omkara upasana or meditation in our path towards the infinite goal Aksharam Brahman in the verses twelve and thirteen. And in the verses twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, Krishna describes the nature of Aksharam Brahman. In the last slide, I would like to end with an infographic which shows a nice summarization of Om. Om is everything. It is the source. It is a vibration and it is the consciousness of entire universe. Thank you, sir. Hari Om.
Thank you very much, Mamta, for another very nice explanation of a very similar verse. That is why he says, sarvopanishadogaavoh dogdaghopalanandana. We go back to the Kathopanishad and these two verses will be explained to us by Dr. Sanjay Marotra. Dr. Sanjay, please.
Om Sri Gurubhyo Namaha. As we have already discussed earlier from the conversation between Nachiketa and Yamadarma Raja, who is giving the Brahma Vidya to Nachiketa and also talking about the importance of the Om, it is also important to understand that one requires Sukshma Buddhi, which is subtle intellect, to perceive Brahman. And Lord Yama is now trying to tell Nachiketa that he will introduce the sadhana which will provide moksha. And upanishad here recommends to meditate upon the symbol of Omkara. Next slide, please. In the previous verse, which is prior to the verse which I have describing, I have to describe, he is going to tell that goal with all the Vedas, which all the Vedas prescribe, where the rishis do austerities and practices of Brahmacharya, that goal is meditation on Om alone. Next slide, please. Etad devaksharam brahmaha, etad devaksharam param, etad devaksharam jyatva yo yadi ichchati tasyatat. The verse means that this syllable, etad aksharam eva, eva, he Brahma, is indeed the Brahma where he is talking about the lower Brahman. Etad aksharam eva, this syllable alone is param as well, indeed the higher Brahman. Gyatva, by knowing this or by meditating upon etad eva aksharam, this very symbol, yath tat, whatever one desire, yath tat ya ichchati tasya hi, indeed he becomes. This syllable indeed is the lower Brahman, which is the lower nature of God as well. This syllable alone which may be the saguna Ishvara here, this syllable is indeed the higher Brahman, which is the higher nature of Brahman, which is the nirguna Ishvara. After meditating upon this very syllable, whatever one desires, he becomes indeed. Next slide, please. In the Patanjali Yoga Shastra, the verse seventeen of the Samadipada, where Patanjali is describing the method to obtain what is called as the Savikalpa or Asampragnasamadhi. In Yoga Shastra, the word uses Asampragnasamadhi. While on the other hand, the alternative word for the nirguna Ishvara Dhyanam or Nirvikalpa Samadhi is Asampragnasamadhi. And they always talk about that you have to have use some kind of alambanam, some kind of Prateekha. And Patanjali describes, vitarka vichara, ananda, asmita, rupa, anugama, sampragnyata. Next slide, please. Which means that sampragnasamadhi, which is your savikalpa samadhi, which results from continuous practice and dispassion, abhyasa and vairagya are of four kinds, which is vitarka anugata, vichara anugata, ananda anugata and asmita anugata. These are the four aspects of sampragnasamadhi. I'm not going to spend too much of time on that. Vitarka is basically alambanam on a Prateekam or a murti or a symbol. Vichara anugata means that you are creating a Prateekam or a alambanam on a thought. Then ananda anugata. Then the meditator goes into a state of enjoying the samadhi, that is called as ananda anugata. And ultimately, he still is attached to his samadhi, state of samadhi where he becomes that I am the doer of this samadhi which is also an attachment. But coming to the next slide, Omkara is the best alambanam because it is versatile, pratima alambanam, which is, for example, a human representation, just a Rama Krishna Ganesh, which is a pratima alambanam, also which is also called as vitarka anugata. Prateekha alambanam is the non-human representation such as Shivalingam, Saligramam, which was described in some of the previous verses, lump of turmeric, flame, devi etc. And Omkara is a Prateekha alambanam also here. By meditation on Omkara, one attains Brahmaloka. This must be read twice. If it is a karma meditation, he will reach the Brahmaloka but to reach the nirguna state, he still has to go through the Brahma Vidya. If it is a niskama meditation, he will reach nirguna Brahma which is called as Krama Mukti. Next slide, please. So, sir, we will jump this slide. We'll go to the next verse. So the next verse says, etad alambanam shreestham, etad alambanam param, etad alambanam gyatva Brahmaloke mahiyate, which means, etad, this is the shreestham alambanam, the best symbol. Etad alambanam, this is the symbol which is param also. Param means for the higher and the lower Brahman, which we talked about in the previous verse. And having meditated upon this alambanam, one becomes adorable in Brahmaloka. This is the best symbol. This is the symbol for the higher as well as the lower Brahman, which again denotes the savikalpa and the nirvikalpa state of Brahman. Having meditated on this symbol, one becomes adorable in Brahmaloka. Next slide, please. So, what in these verses Yamadarma Raja is trying to describe to Nachiketa is that Om is the best symbol for meditation, both for the state of reaching a savikalpa samadhi or attaining the sampragnia state of samadhi as well as the higher nature of knowing the Brahman which is the niruguna nirvikalpa or the asampragnasamadhi. So, Om is the best symbol and as well as it being discussed in the previous verses as well, that Om is the best symbol for meditating upon the higher nature of God, Brahman or whatever you call it. Thank you very much. Hari Om.
Thank you, Dr. Sanjay. That was another excellent explanation of two important Kathopanishad verses. The upanishads and the Gita are the ultimate sources of information and it is so nice to see how much they praise about Omkara and therefore, let us learn to see how we can use Omkara in our meditation both as upasana and as nidityasana. You will see such a similarity in the Bhagavad Gita which will be explained to us by Shiv Kumar. Shiv Kumar, please.
Hari Om. Sri Gurubhyo Namaha. From the fifth verse of this eighth chapter, Lord has been answering Arjuna's question regarding the method, significance and benefit of remembering the Lord at the time of death. Prayanakala Ishvarasmaranam. In this verse, Lord explaining Omkara upasana, he says, om ityaksharam brahma vyaharan ma manusmaran, ya prayati tyajan deham sayati paramam gathim. Next slide, sir. Om itivyaaran, he utters the word Om which is ekaksharam brahma. Ekaksharam, monosyllabled word revealing Brahman through this anusmaran, he remembers God even when ya prayati, even when he travels or departs, deham tyajan, having dropped the physical body or sthula shariram. Death is said to be intensely painful and despite the pain, those who can focus on God, even at that last moment, attain him. Bhagavat Padashankaracharya in his commentary says, having closed all the gates, having confined the mind in the lotus of the heart, he ascends by the nadi which passes upwards from the heart, fixes his life breath in the head, engaged in firm yoga, uttering the one-syllabled Om, while thinking of me, the saguna Ishvara, who does departs, leaving the body, leaving the body, he reaches the supreme goal. In Prashna Upanishad, answering Satyakama, sage Pippalada says, the syllable Om is the supreme Brahman as well as the other Brahman. The one who meditates on the supreme purusha by the three-lettered syllable Om becomes united with the effulgent sun, led up by the sama hymns to the Brahmaloka. A nishkama saguna upasaka, having dropped the sthula shariram, Atma, the consciousness, also cannot travel because it is all pervading and that which travels is the subtle and causal body. That which travels is called Jivah, consisting of sukshma sharira and the reflected consciousness. Sayadi paramam paramam gathim. Suche Jivatma travels towards the highest goal of life through Krama Mukti, goes to Brahmaloka, gains Brahmagnanam and attains liberation. Next slide, sir. The person, this sadaka must be a nishkama saguna upasaka. He can have finite or finite or pratima symbols like Shiva, Rama, Krishna, Devi or it can be Prateekha symbols like Agni, Shivalingam, Saligrama etc. Omkara is a Prateekha alambanam or symbol. Both the pratima and Prateekha symbols represent the infinite law. A nishkama upasaka who constantly practices Omkara upasana through Omkara remembers the Lord even at the time of death. After death, this nishkama upasaka attains Krama Mukti, he will go to Brahmaloka where he gets nirguna Ishvara Jnana and attains Jivatma Paramatma Aikya. Important here is that antakkala Ishvarasmaranam is a must for Krama Mukti. That is, at the time of death, he must utter Om and remember God or remember God and utter Ram or Shiva and so on. However, to achieve such a state is very difficult, requiring continuous practice throughout one's life, but possible to develop, just like the village ladies carry pots of water balanced on their heads, talking and joking with their friends, but with constant focus on balancing the pot on their head. So too, we should continue with our duties while we constantly chant the name of the Lord incessantly. The bell at the entrance of a temple or the prayer bowls used by the Buddhist monks etc. Produce the Om sound. These are there to prepare our mind for upasana, to focus our thought on God. Hari Om. Sri Gurubhyo Namaha.
Thank you very much, Shiv, for a very nice explanation and you will see the similarity between the Bhagavad Gita and the upanishads. Enough jump to the Kaivalya upanishad and this verse will be explained to us by Dr. Sandhya. Dr. Sandhya, please.
Hari Om. Sri Gurubhyo Namaha. This is a verse from the Kaivalya upanishad, which is a minor upanishad and the dialogue takes place between Ashwalaina, who is a qualified pupil and Lord Brahma himself, who is the teacher about Brahma Vidya. Reciting the verse, atmanam arinam kritva pranavam cha uttararidhum, jnannam dilmatanam abhyasat, paasham dahati panditaha. So this upanishadik mantra talks about self-inquiry or Atmavichara. Just as we need a mirror to see ourselves, we need a mirror for Atmavichara also. And what is this mirror? Shastram is this mirror. Shastra vichara typically happens through shravanam and mananam. And in this verse, it is explained through an analogy. Most of the upanishads use some form of analogy to explain the key meanings. Many things like Srishthi, Panchakoshas, Avastatraya are discussed in the upanishads, but we need to extract the central message of the teaching. This is called Tatpariya Nirnaya, where we use lingani or clues and that's how the central message of Tatvamasi and Ahambrahmasi is extracted. Extracting this is not easy. We need the help of the shastrik mirror. We need a guru or an acharya to understand this. And the process of vichara happens through shravanam and mananam. In this particular upanishad, the analogy of arani matanam is used to explain this. Arani matanam is a process of generating fire for a Vedic ritual. Normally, in recent times, what we do is, we use a matchstick or, you know, camphor to generate a fire. But that's not how Vedas prescribe that a Vedic ritual must begin. Two blocks of wood are used here. The lower block, as you can see in the picture, is the adho arani, made of ashvata vriksha. This has a small scooped-out central portion into which fits the now the rod of wood which is called the uttararani and that's made from a shami vriksha. So the yajamana or the priest is the one who churns this rod using a rope. Churning creates friction, friction creates sparks and this is caught on dry grass or dry leaves or coconut fiber and it's transferred to the homakundam and that's how a Vedic fire is started and that's the fire which receives the ovulations. So in this mantra, arani matanam is likened to Vedanta vichara. Let us look at the deeper meaning of these lines. Atmanam arani kritva means, the lower arani is the qualified, steady, unwavering mind of the pupil. It does not move, it should not move, just as the student's mind needs to be focused. Pranavam cha uttararinam, the churning rod is the Omkara mantra or pranava. And churning is the vichara or inquiry that must happen into Brahman or self-knowledge. And the person who does the churning is the guru. So the Omkara mantra, a, u and ma, is equated to jagrat, swatna and shushukti avastas. That is, the viratvishwa, the hiranyagarbataijasa and the ishvara prajna. And in the process of shravanam and mananam, one has to disidentify from these three states and then become the avastatraya sakshi, that is part of the thuriya state. And any upanishadik mantra can be used for this churning of the rod. But this upanishad states Omkara or the pranava. The most important aspect of this churning or self-inquiry is repetition. Shravanam, the most important aspect of shravanam is repetition. And this can be facilitated only by a guru and the shisha must have a stable, stira and available mind. Next, jyanam nirmatanam abhyasat. So what is this churning that we are doing? We are doing it on the jyanam. And this helps to analyze the mahavakya. Repeated churning helps to analyze the mahavakya. And in the process of churning, we separate the vaacharta from the laksharta. That is the literal from the intended meanings. Example, with tatvamasie, the churning helps us to understand that tva is the pure consciousness and ta is the pure existence or paramatma and asie is the aikhyam or the oneness of. So it's a long process, this nirmatanam. And only with abhyasa or practice and repetition can this spark of knowledge be kindled. Shravanam sparks the knowledge and it's a feeble flame at best. It is up to the shisha to carefully protect and nurture it so that it becomes a conflagration through mananam and thereafter it becomes a forest fire in nevidyasana. The guru plays a very important role in shravanam, a very limited role in manana. In nevidyasana, the shisha is entirely on his own. And such a person who gets established in this knowledge is a jyananishtha or a panditaha. Paasham dahati, so this panditaha burns all that is binding in the fire of knowledge. The pasha or bondage, that is avidya, ahankara, mamakara, kartritvam, bhoktrittvam, all the karmas and the very triangular format of jiva jagat Ishvara is burnt here into the fire. Two ideas are conveyed in this example. One is, fire is produced by matanam or churning and knowledge comes from shastra vichara. We liken matanam to shastra vichara. The second point is, fire burns all our fuel and knowledge burns all our bondage. So self-knowledge is compared to fire, just as the fire has the ability to both illuminate and destroy. Brahma Vidya or self-knowledge burns the samsara and illumines Brahman. Hari Om.
Thank you, Dr. Sandhya, for giving us another nice explanation. So you will see every Upanishad that touches upon the Omkara in its own way and the Mundaka Upanishad has got a very beautiful symbolism of the bow and arrow and the chariot wheel, which will be explained by Dr. Anupama. Dr. Anupama, please.
Sri Gurubhyo namaha. In the second Mundaka, second Khanda, mantras four and six mention Omkara as follows. Mantra four, Pranavo dhanuhu sharohi atma brahmatal lakshyam uchyate, apramatena vedavyam sharavat tanmayo bhavet. This mantra gives us details of comparison between archery and brahmavidya. The bow is comparable to pranava or Omkara. Pranavo dhanuhu, the arrow to jivatma, the seeker, sharohi atma. And who is this jivatma? Brahmashta, Brahman enclosed in the body. As Krishna has described, Paramatme tija yuttobu dehe asmin purushaha param. Brahmalakshyam uchyate, Brahman is the target or destination of that jivatma. What is the relevance of this comparison? Just as the means, the facilitator or pravesha karanam in archery is the bow, in brahmavidya it is pranava or Omkara. Next, the quality of instrument, the arrow should be straight and sharp. The jivatma should be samskriya manaha, as Krishna says, Aneka janma samsiddha, we should have jyanayogketa by the pursuit of karma and upasana yogas. Finally, just as practice is needed for the proper anchorage of arrow upon bow, the seeker has to do Omkara vichara. Omkara vichara, as explained in the Mandukya Upanishad means, the akkara or pratamma pada represents vishva virat, the ukkara or dhritya pada representing pajasa hiranyagarbha and the makkara or dhritya pada prajna Ishvara. Each of these pairs result into thuriyam. The culmination of Omkara vichara should be ahambrahmasmi. The seeker is now refined by the removal of jyanas, samshaya and vikpariyaya, meaning vasanas in the form of deh vasana, vishay vasanas, meaning identification with possessions, obligations, relationships and transactions and also shastra vasana, obsession with shastra grammar etc. Missing the tatpariyam or message of the shastra. What is the result of this practice? Just as the arrow strikes the target perfectly, jivatma merges with paramatma by dissociating with the mind. He now looks upon himself as ahambrahmasmi. This is the phalam of brahmavidya. The sakshi status is lost when I identify with my mind because I become a pramatham. The moment I slip, samsara is waiting to swallow me. Mantra six. Ara eva rata na bho samhata yatra naadiya saesha anta charate behuda jaay manaha. Om iti eva dhayata atmanam swastivaa parayat masaha parastha. This means, the heart is the hub from which all the nadis emerge and spread to the periphery, meaning the world of pain and pleasure. In this physical heart is the subtle antakarana or buddhi. And in this buddhi, paramatma is recognized as the sakshi chaitanya, the witness consciousness. This is jivatma paramatma aikhyam. So in every inert thought in the mind, when associated with the sakshi chaitanya, it becomes an experience for us, pratidhodan viditam matam. But since the association of this thought with the chaitanya is so intimate, we tend to drift along with the flow of thoughts, which manifests in many ways, jaay manaha behuda. In this deluded state of identification with the body-mind complex, the atma also appears to move along with the thoughts. Saesha charate anta yatra naadiya samhata. Here, the atma is compared to the motionless hub, which is the anchor of the wheel and the flow of thoughts to the moving spokes, eva araha rata na. Just as our attention shifts from the anchor, the hub, to the flashy spokes of the chariot wheel, which radiate from the hub, we lose awareness of the atma as the witness consciousness, which alone illuminates all the vibrant thoughts generated by various inputs, the shaktis, pashar, rupa, rasa and gungho. Now, in this state of delusion, we lose the bliss of the touch of the one, the atma, in the play of the many, the anati. The Upanishad now requests mankind to recognize and identify with this atma. How? By Omkara vichara. Using Omkara as the facilitator, the pravesha karanam, just as the archer uses the bow, Om iti evam dhayata atmanam and reach the shore, the paramam dhamam, the brahmani rvaanam, swastivaa parayat tamasaha parastha. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anupama. You were able to very quickly bring in three verses from the Mundaka, which is the bow and arrow example, the jivatma paramatma aikhyam possible through. These are all nidityasana mantras, not upasana mantras unlike the mantras we've studied earlier and the very nice example of the chariot wheel, to be able to focus on the essence and not to be disturbed by all the dust of all the thoughts. You will see that in the Keno Upanishad, you do not have any direct reference to Omkara but then we have uma coming there and uma leads Indira to to an understanding of Brahman and uma in the Keno Upanishad can be taken as Omkara. This is the Isha Vasyo Upanishad. This is the only Upanishad where there is a prayer and this is called the charama prathanam when a person is dying. Vaayur anilam, when my breath becomes air, when my body is reduced to ashes and this time, there is a little anxiety, there is a prayer which says, Om krtosmara, krtosmara. Oh, please remember all the good that I have done and that is how Omkara comes in Isha Vasyo Upanishad. We'll conclude. Rinkish, please.
Was it not amazing, friends, to know about this first syllable, first vibration of this word? Every Veda mantra or sloka, every yajna, every tapas, every dana or any auspicious puja begins with Om, which is Lord's name. Om tatsaditi nirdesho brahmana strividasvata brahmana stena vedascha yajnascha vihitapura shadhatrae vibhagayoga. Om is none other than Brahman. Om is none other than Krishna. Om is none other than Akman. Thank you all teachers and Dr. Sir for a wonderful session. In our next session, we will take up mantras from Mandukya Upanishad, all of which focus on Om. It is customary to chant Gayatri mantra after meditation or study of Om. While I chant the mantra, all of you can chant along with me, muting yourselves. Om bhoot bhuvasvaha tatsabitul vareniam bhargo devasya dhimahi dhio yona prachodaya. With this, the session comes to a close. Hari Om. Om pona madapona midampona pona mudachyate, pona sya pona madaya, pona me bava shixyate. Om shanti 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 hari om Sri Gurubhyo namaha hari om.